Long time no see. You're, you're drier.
Derek, are those set? Okay, great. One more over here, thanks.
I'm slowly signing. Jeff confused to go up and fix things and on top of the highway building. I'll call for motion to come out of executive session. Move in a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, pose of standing, motion carries. Please stand for the statement, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have our budget presentation for the director, someone turn it over to superintendent.
Thank you. Whoever sits up front should always be rewarded, right? I mean, I think that's the way I feel, and Julie, you like when we go to conferences and we still.
You're rewarding Jeff.
So, um, let's start with, um, what, what was that? Oh, they were the first ones here too, so you should, we should. Oh, you let them go, I was just thinking maybe, um. What, what, what reward that people are sitting up front who were here first, it sounds like. Yeah, absolutely. So, I, my pleasure to call up, um, Jeff, Angel and Jeff Elias, um, from our curriculum instruction technology department.
Jeff, take your time, Jeff has thirty seconds.
All right, here we go, I think we have four slides. Derek, I'm gonna point at you, thank you very much. I'll start, Jim will go back. Right, so this is the curriculum development service training budget line, there's no change. Same as last year, this is the money, this is what we use for the teacher reductions or O M D standards updates. With specifically, uh, the upcoming year, with science and like environment, we use this line for distorted practices, training, just continuing. We have been implementing at the high schools past year. We also use this for professional development, general professional development, and support for K V five building.
With the next slide, our regular instruction instructional materials budget, following the theme of the first slide, there is no change to that as well. Um, this money goes toward our four materials, also for reading math, four materials, uh, for the science investigations, which you started to use for Pfizer Inc., and then also some supplemental materials that are used by our.
On the technology side of things, last year we benefited from the two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar ECF print, it was terrific. It gave us a little shot in the arm and extended the life of the tech, uh, reserved by a solid year. So we were able to use that to fill all of the classroom laptop, pro books across the district screen. So this year, we're just looking for two hundred thousand dollars, most expected to, um, the majority investment to use on stuff, okay, actual computers, devices, projectors, things of that sort, and a portion of that would be used for contractual costs associated with the installation of those. This line in general, there was also used for classroom instructional, I said that classroom instructional, that's why I have to talk about it. Software training and support as well, plus the instruction of software and support. And then infrastructure and safety, couple of, uh, wrapper, for example, one additional wrapper station here and there. Uh, we were talking about how, um, when you have, uh, one wrapper station, each be smooth, one makes sure you have a backup wrapper station. Uh, so I'm gonna have the far right. Other infrastructure and safety, um, just make sure to do things that aligns of improved, uh, connectivity between T A system and the phone system, for example, for this place right there, or other types of standard repairs and contractual processes.
And I would just add, those extra raptor stations, one of the things that we notice is when we have events at the schools where parents are coming in, it's really hard to get them in in a timely fashion, having them wrapped it in, so that second station would allow for, uh, you know, quicker, uh, intake.
Yeah, when you have two lines of people coming in, so basically, you know, say CD's running, you want two lines of people coming in and not having to follow an extra. That's technology.
So in summary, between all our budget lines, there's no net increase in the budget. We have re-allocated a little bit between some of the components. We've also this year made substantial progress in our classroom technology, but I think for the first time, I think you can say that we're equitable in the classroom spaces for the most part. Um, we're going to continue to work on mining, our reading and math, scoping sequences, materials vertically. One of the things, uh, the projects that we're gonna be working on next year are some materials from the middle school, we, we are a subject study. Um, and then, as Jeff mentioned, the new training for safety and healthy students related to responding practices, which we will continue in the high school, we're going to start.
Dominic, food service. And just while, while Donald is passing these out, we'll take all these and we'll post them, the presentations, we'll get them on the, on the, what, uh, district website.
I'm the boiling food service director, presenting point one one five food service budget.
Next slide.
Salary and fringe benefits, uh, as most of you are aware, salary and fringe benefits are contractual increases that are included in our food service budget. Budgeted lines for this year and projections for next year. Um, I'm anticipating an additional ninety thousand dollars in food expenditure for the coming school year, supplies remain the same at seventy-five thousand. The same with the vending machine purchases and government commodities. In this slide, as far as new equipment, equipment repair, contractual services and conferences, we're projecting the same amounts for the coming school year. Our current goals, um, the whole district is community eligible. That means all students receive free breakfast, free lunch, that has been approved for four years, depending on the date for the year of application. And on that fourth year, that's when I start the process, I'll look around to continue approval for the next four years after that. And our continual goal is promoting more participation, getting the kids to come in and participate at each kitchen, each school, each location, to try to reach that total enrollment for building. Short and simple, thank you very much for your continued support, uh, in every field, self-supporting food service program.
Thank you. Leslie, you're up.
Hi, Leslie Bukowski from Director of Transportation, this is my budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. The only increase that I'm gonna have is fuel, and that's because fuel has gone up. It's gonna go from three hundred and fifty thousand to three seventy-five. Everything else is gonna stay the same. I currently have forty-three drivers permanently unassigned, sixteen attendants, four mechanics, two labors, one head bus driver, two office clerical that don't drive. One school bus lead coordinator, and one director of transportation, note, nine other bus garage staff, seven drive regularly. Our current maintenance schedule includes sixty-three buses, one truck, one shop truck, two Durangos, which are getting a lot of use, which is wonderful. Um, our mechanics provide minor maintenance with a three and a six month routine checklist. Our school bus D O T profile is ninety-eight point seven out of a hundred, and there'll be a new one coming out at the end of this month. We continue to recruit, maintain safe quality drivers and attendant monitors. Thank you for your so, for your safety and support of our children, please stay safe tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, thank you for having me this evening, we are going to talk about the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five proposal budget. And just, uh, just going on informational facts there, this is budget based on quest from our, uh, for our varsity JV modified unified programs, over sixty-four programs in our house. First line, uh, just to go through briefly, was our equipment line, that's code two oh one, and as you can see there from last year to this year, uh, it's decreased by twenty thousand, again, we appreciate that, I know our track and field team does, because the big purchase there was the, uh, pole vaulted, uh, with all the masks and everything from last year, and, um, I'm really excited for that, this year we were to participate in larger scale of that search section, so that's terrific, so that's great, thank you. The next line is our, our contractual line, this is the, uh, or see everything correctly, this is the only line that, to give a substantial increase, and that's due to an increase in trainer costs, it's due to, uh, you know, with their new programs such as their indoor track costs, um, also, uh, official travel costs, as we know, officials in your contracts, it's one of the sticking points in the contracts, that we do have to pay officials now for their travel from contest to contest, so that's increased, as well as the, the, the one item there that I added to this, in particular contractual code. Uh, it's the addition that, um, we're excited and thrilled that our teams are doing successful, successful. But what I've realized in the last several years with that success of state championships, and we've had four times, uh, get to state championships this year, and many of those state championships don't get financial backing for them for transportation and housing and certain, and aspects like that, so say for example, um, uh, we needed to get our wrestling team to the state championship for a three-day event in Albany, um, you know, that bus may cost two or three thousand dollars, and again, that's something I wanted to foresee and be able to budget for, uh, moving forward, uh, in the future, that's, and it's been fortunate, because in the past, really in the past five years, we've been in that situation, and that number continued to increase, so it's something I really wanted to, to make sure we got it now. The one thing, uh, that I do want to allude to, and it's not particular in this contractual area, and that is a few additional, uh, or salary-based codes, which we have added. Um, and one of those is an assistant to our unified program, uh, in particular, they're going to unify bowling, uh, events, they're very exciting, they're thrilling, but it's, uh, very high stimulus, uh, and it's, it's wide open and it's in a general area, obviously the bowling lanes will spread out over the place, and with kids with special needs and our general education students, you know, uh, two individuals in that situation is obviously something that we need to look at, and certainly that will put the losing for this year. Um, as well as, um, the other one coming right off my head here is, um, flag football. Flag football is something that we were really excited to add last year, and certainly we appreciate that, but, um, experiencing it last year, watching Coach Coulter do a great job with the girls, when the girls came off offensively, and then simultaneously defensively, where they, the players were coming on, it was hard to go back and forth, I noticed, um, with that, and when we did our study, one hundred percent of those other teams had two coaches as well, so those are some other.
And if I just add one more thing, that just the, the numbers in both of those programs are to the point where you're above the number that we're comfortable just having one adult supervision, if in a case those numbers drop down, we'd be comfortable just putting one coach on.
Oh, just, again, these are just, uh, the, the cold forks and six inches supplies, and that's just maintenance supplies, forest, infected rights, uh, we also use this for maintenance on our brand new equipment in our, in our weight room, uh, that actually does the trick. Supplies, uh, no, no change in supplies from last year to this year, again, those are just general supplies, uh, the higher price tag items, they're equivalent to ones that we put in the equipment, so those are just couple of examples. Uniforms, again, uh, it'll be the same with no difference there. A wall of pain, something roughly product that every November as you well know, and, uh, not high in the loss, so it's the state of state. So in total, we have decreased our budget, we said about that, and, uh, you know, we hope to continue our success from the budget we have uh, this year, thank you, any questions?
So your budgetary code there, indoor track then is still good to go then next year, or?
Yep, yeah, yeah, I think we're pretty, pretty good shape there with, uh, uh, the supplies, and fortunately, you know, you know, supplies is, you know, we can give what you, you know, what coaches need, but it's not too substantial. Um, and we've added the, uh, you know, again, that's part of the salary piece that we have added, um, in the budget, but in the the overall scheme of things, then salary's the big piece, but I would also implement the budget there and reduce for the indoor track as well.
It's a, it's a transportation though that costs a lot, though, with that one, yeah.
But for sure.
Yeah, and there was, well, just one question with, when I came to the equipment, um, well, can you go back to that slide, just the, the number there? It's, it's a ways back, it was pretty close, the beginning of the thing. I seen that there's a significant decrease there, one of the areas that I, I'm wondering if in that twenty thousand, it's part of that was the, you know, you were looking at mats maybe or mat.
Well, yeah, yeah, there was, there was, yeah, I should have mentioned, there's two big, two big.
But that's actually covered in this cost too. You already did it.
Yeah, so just let me reiterate that, that twenty-five thousand differential is basically, which covered from forty-five to twenty this year, so we're, we're not adding that this year, it's already been purchased, our mat for wrestling, and then also our pole vaulted, so that's already done, we're back. We're back to where we were.
I just wanted to make sure I knew which year it was a, so we're good, thank you, man.
The twenty-five thousand was still two big ticket items that now.
You could put money in there for turf or the, uh, pole, the pole barn, so we can turn it into indoor stadium.
I have a lot of plans for that as well.
Nice segue, I can call him right up now. Is everybody good, any questions for Adam, sorry? Okay, very good job, thanks. Greg, you're up.
Thank you, everybody. Steve will be more than happy to put that in the loft. So I'm here to do a presentation tonight for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for facilities. Uh, just a quick recap of the department, I have one head custodian that's district-wide, uh, four maintenance personnel, five district-wide labors, seven building labors, thirty-three full-time night cleaners, one full-time day cleaner, uh, four part-time day cleaners, and two part-time night cleaners and one male courier, and on the full-time, part-time day cleaners, which is a lot to say, uh, they also split their shift with, uh, being a bus aide, which just seems to be working out well, how do we get the bucks out of it? So, under our annual maintenance contractual fee increases, uh, we have start, which U N S services for our building controls, uh, their fees went up, uh, fifteen hundred, thirty-five dollars, uh, fire and safety systems for monitoring for sixteen hundred dollars, and sixteen forty, sorry, and a large chunk of that is for the monitoring for the new bolt arms of this system that went in there. Uh, American rock salt for our bulk salt that we use on the grounds in the winter, you know, thirty-one hundred dollars. Uh, that cost has also gone up exponentially on us over eleven dollars a ton in the last year. Uh, Hartford steam boilers for our annual inspections, their cost has risen sixteen eighty, and our gym, gym doors, which are needing more maintenance, and my guys can service now, we've had to bring a company in, uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars for a total of ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, also with the rising costs, um, we've tried to keep this to the last few years level, and the COVID money helped keep the costs of supplies down, but we headed to a ten percent increase through our custodial supplies for each building and for some maintenance supplies for stuff that we needed for a total of eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. One thing for equipment, um, we've been really good over the last few years with our trucks, uh, we've got our fleet in pretty good shape. So this year, we're going to concentrate on some equipment for our elementary schools and secondary locations for our sidewalks to make the job easier for everybody, um, it's not only gonna be faster and safer, uh, it just frees up so much time for them to still be getting stuff done in the buildings. Uh, those are thirty thousand dollars a piece, all outfitted, so I'd be looking at two of those for a total of sixty thousand dollars if it's possible. Um, we have quite a bit of parking lot ceiling to do again this year with new stuff that went in at West Street. Um, we have the bus garage to redo, any of the places we touched new last year have to be done, and then I'm gonna attempt to get the bus garage done as well. Um, under the mandated services, we have our five-year building condition survey that we had to bump up this year, um, square footage prices coming in higher, we want to be safe, uh, to seventy-five thousand, and our required blood testing is also this year that we had a bump up, because those costs seem to be coming in high as well for an additional two thousand.
One, one really, really quick thing. Um, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but we do get reimbursed for the building condition survey.
Correct.
Um, there's, I don't know that it's the full amount, but there is a center amount, yeah, so just so everybody knows that.
Thank you for your considerations, if you may have any questions.
So you're getting two of the, uh, the miniature plows for the.
That, that would be my goal, we purchased two this year.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Staggered out, and I'd like to purchase two next year, if possible, then we'll have our elementary schools and Edwardtown Middle School complete, and we should be in pretty good shape at all the buildings.
What's the overall increase? What's the overall increase?
To my total budget, about one point three nine percent overall. They also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the number. I have to look at my paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Last but not least, Steve.
Great, so Steve Metzger, Director of Special Programs. So overall, um, we've been able to maintain, um, the same dollar amount for many of these areas in our budget. The most, um, you know, obvious and the most significant increases are still in the private placement tuition, as well as the B O C special education, and those are what are highlighted down there. Now, B O Cs, of course, um, is something that is reimbursable, we can get reimbursed on much of that, which is good, but the reason for that increase really comes down to, um, just not only like the increase in, you know, what B O Cs charges, but also on the increase in student needs for specific placements, uh, specific programs and specific services. Um, same with, um, the private placement tuition, although we have less control over that because the state sets all those rates, so we've seen an increase in that based on not only the rate increase by the state, but also just the increase in student needs for those particular placements.
If I can just comment on that really. So, so everybody here knows, what's really interesting, Steve, and I talked a little about this, is that the rates that were set for those private placement tuition increases are higher than what's being proposed for the state aid, particularly the foundation aid percents, so on one hand, they're saying, yeah, we're comfortable raising these rates, this amount, but then not giving you foundation eight dollars in the same percent increase to cover those costs.
So I just, unless, if you go back for one more second, I just want to show you the dollar amount, and I'm gonna go to another slide that has the breakdown of the. So I just, on that, if you go back for one more second, I just want to show you the dollar amount, and I'm gonna go to another slide that has the breakdown of the private placement. But if you look at the comparison between twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, it's about an increase of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Wow.
So.
Well, I just wanted to say that I also know that they did not, um, budget, um, I believe there was a budget level or reduction, budget reduction for some of those special schools, like the forty-two oh one schools. And I don't know that the state actually budgeted well enough for them, and this is the state's way of pushing that, uh, tuition back to the schools. So they're not budgeting, uh, at the, at their end, and they're pushing the tuition on our end so that the costs are more absorbed by us.
Good point. That's from our presentation. Good. Can you reiterate that, yeah?
Here's a breakdown of the tuition and the number of students at the different private placements that we currently, um, serve our students through C S E, this is from A D C. Um, and for twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, you have the rate, and we've gotta figure it's a ten percent increase for the next school year. So the estimated total to the far right column, uh, is noted in the far right column for each of those schools. Um, you know, our hope is to bring these kids back. That is, you know, always our goal in some years. Um, most years, I should say, we do transition the number of these kiddos back to the school districts, but, um, you know, based on this, you know, intensity of needs and, you know, both social, emotionally and academic, you know, we have to make sure we have these, um, that we account for these placements in the budget. And we also, so those figures on the previous slide were the students that are currently enrolled, and of course, we gotta plan for students that are gonna be coming in and the needs of the following school year. So we looked at Stanley G Fault, that is where a lot of our students are placed, and we took that tuition rate and basically used that as the average fourth and team for next year. That seems to be where most of these kids are placed and where they are finding success.
And finding placements.
Correct.
Well, no, no question for you. I think Ross said, um, Bob asked, what are our overall, what are our overall foundation aid increases right now with the governor's budget? And that's twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's what the, our foundation aid increases at this, at this point in time.
Thank you to the directors and the reports. It's much appreciated. All right, I will move on to the consensus agenda items. Call for a motion to accept a consensus agenda that was submitted. Make the motion. Second, to move in second, anything to separate and discuss? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept the personnel report is submitted. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move in second. It will separate number one. For items two through seven, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. Turn it over to the superintendent for item number one.
It's my absolute pleasure tonight to recommend to you, uh, Jen Lefer-Calius, someone who you know well, um, to be the next Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Technology in our district. Um, we went through a, um, extensive search process. We had a large number of candidates for this position, uh, from all over Western New York. And we brought in some other real top-notch, um, experienced, um, administrators who she competed with. And in the end, it was really clear to our committee of eleven that Jennifer was at and shoulders above the other candidates who are involved, and that's not taking anything away from them. Um, we had known, uh, for a while what a great job she's been doing. A lot of you have seen her here at numerous board meetings presenting. But, um, to see her stand up against some really strong competition out there, um, was, um, pretty exciting, I think, to everybody who knows her well and thought that that's what would happen when we compared her to the competition that's out there. So it is my absolute pleasure, as I said, to recommend Jen Calius tonight for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Development.
All those in favor then of accepting Jen for that position, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, she carries. Congratulations, Jen. You said she had to do a speech, right?
She's gotta give a speech.
You've always wanted those to be really short, though, so, you know.
Oh, Jeff didn't use this for a lot of time, so. Uh, that's, okay. Ex officious student members report. Hopefully you can do it better than the superintendent did last week.
Oh, I don't know. We'll see.
Peter, you started. Just let me thank you. You, you hopefully didn't watch the thing while you were sick at the meeting, but I did publicly thank you for still preparing something, um, even though you were sick and you weren't here, and just told everybody how conscious I thought that was, and you have been actually all the time that you've been with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's very, very nice of you. Um, the DECA, um, competitors of the states today, so good luck to them. Um, we have the musical showing this weekend. Um, there'll be three showings, one on Friday at seven. Um, and then two on Saturday, one at one, and then the other one at seven. The, the senior superlatives vote ends today. Um, we had a Skills USA regional competition for BOSIs, and, uh, there's a few kids from Wheatfield who medaled, so congratulations to them. Um, and we are in our twenty-fifth week, so mid-quarter grades are, uh, ending Friday, and, uh, that's about it.
I know.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you for mentioning Newsies, the musical, so that is coming out this weekend. Obviously, very exciting for all the students who put in all the time and effort that they do for those musicals. Um, someone a long time ago said it to me like this. When you think of the musical, uh, weekend, think of it like, if, if, if you wanna relate it to sports, where sports have games throughout a season, they do all of their practicing at once for one big weekend of all of their shows and their games, and that's their game time. So it's really exciting to celebrate that with them. Um, there is a high school volleyball tournament that was supposed to be this week, um, but it's being rescheduled. Um, I don't think a date has come out for that yet, but when it does, we'll, we'll share that back out. We've had, uh, staff and administrative teams uh, participate in that in the past. I know we had some teams set to play again this year. The last thing that I have, um, has to do with our capital project. So we were hoping that next week, we would have our bid openings, next week, Thursday, for, uh, our next phase of our project, which includes the auditorium. It looks as though, um, we won't have the information that we need by tomorrow, so let's just say we don't. Um, we are now moving, though, we're gonna move those bid dates out about three weeks. So we're looking at, it would be April fourth, if that's the Thursday. So we expect that to, to be the time. We have already adjusted, in essence, in our, um, long-range plan for the completion of the project that instead of being done in the fall of twenty-six, we're really looking at the winter of twenty-six. Our goal is to make sure that that auditorium is done by the spring for all the events that we have in that, in that auditorium, so that's still our goal. Um, if you're wondering why the delay, it's, approval is still sitting with New York State. And when we initially set this timeline, the, um, approved the number of weeks for getting a project approved was about half of what it is now. So it's doubled in how long it's taking. And I just want to remind the board, because you'll remember this, there used to be an opportunity to pay a little bit of a premium to have your projects, um, looked at by someone from the outside, and then the project approval was a lot quicker. This year, they removed that as an option, citing the fact that the approvals were coming in much quicker. But they're not anymore. Uh, and our project is now being hopped up as a result of those, those delays. Um, and, um, we, we hope that doesn't, that doesn't impact, uh, the, the number of, um, companies that put in bids. Um, it sounds like we actually have quite a few bidders, uh, for all of the different, um, lines of work that are required for this particular project. So that's really good news.
Any questions in superintendent's report? Um, budget presentation.
So we figured you had enough budget presentations for tonight. We really don't have anything to add at this time. We are going to, Allison, I think we're gonna spend some time in our next meeting going over our, um, both the expenditure budget, and we're gonna talk about the revenue budget the best that we can without knowing what's coming from New York State, because we usually find out by April first. I doubt it'll be early. Let's hope it's not late. Okay, but we'll, we'll have a in-depth discussion about levy, state aid, the impact on the revenue side that those will have in closing the gap in our expenditure budget. All right.
Allison, uh, timeline-wise, what are we looking in? Um, when do we have to have the levy limit set? I can't remember what meeting that was.
Okay, so by the April seventeenth meeting, the budget and property tax report kind of have to be adopted.
All right.
So, so just adding one thing that we'll, we'll have this more of an in-depth conversation at the next meeting. The first meeting in April then would be really the, making that decision probably would be doing, unless there was another meeting after that that was set.
And hopefully we stayed some time with our budget. Right, any items for board discussion? Any old business? New business? All the comments? Jeff? Uh, like, board more comments? Just to, hey, guys, remember, come see the musical. Come see Dan Friday night.
We'll work up the Saturday show with Steve Sabo in it.
Uh, Dan's better, so Dan Friday night. All right, um, I'll call for motion to adjourn. To move in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, we're adjourned.